Call the regularly scheduled order select the meeting for Monday, January sixth, twenty twenty five to order. First order of business pledge of allegiance. Charles, would you please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charles. All right, item two, have a public hearing to consider enactment of ordinance to amend the code. Town of Guilford, chapter one sixty six fees are the two planning and zoning fees. And to give us a little bit of background, town planner, Ann Archibald, happy new year.
As you may recall, last summer, we adjusted all the permit fees for the planning and zoning office. We found as we enacted the realities of the new regulations, which require a building, a zoning permit for every building permit, that there are certain permits that probably don't, though required by state statute for us to review. I find that the permits are bifurcated between those things that affect our bulk standards, things like lot coverage, floor areas, and those things that have very little to do with those issues, such as a contractor coming in for an electrical upgrade. They are required to pull a building permit, and thus they're required to pull a zoning permit. But what we found is a lot of people are objecting to the hundred dollar zoning permit fee. So we vetted with council if we could eliminate the zoning permit fee for those instances that, where we would call it a minor zoning permit. That's not allowed by state statute because the state requires there are sixty dollar fee for any land use review. So this is a proposal to essentially bifurcate the zoning permits, where we have one permit for what I would call major projects, things that affect bulk standards, things that require substantial review by our department, and minor permits at a sixty dollar fee, which is essentially just the state fee for things, all other things. So that's what I proposed.
Great. I had received several inquiries, if you've called about the selectman's office, from contractors who, when the new standards were put in place, which are comply with the state statute. It never happened before. All we're doing is replacing a roof like we need his only permit for. All I'm doing is replacing a furnace like for like, what do I get his only permit for? And it was pretty interesting. I got a variety of trades asking about that. And as the end, take a look at it, we work with legal, and that's, that's what we've come up with. It's essentially almost a nuisance, a nuisance fee. However, it is required by the state, but more importantly, it does not require significant amount of time in terms of investment on Anne and her staff. It's, oh, okay, this is just a roof, bingo. No problem, let it fly through. So it does not require significant amount of time spent. So that is the genesis, and it was the support we had, and that was the solution that came up. That, that was developed by town council.
Has the state been notified about this issue?
Not, 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 not to my knowledge. The state, the state issues, the state says, they don't care. It's a only permit, it's only, you gotta, you gotta get sixty bucks.
Well, I don't care if enough people, you know, I know you're involved in cog and the rest of it.
Right, at CCM.
I just, you know. Not gonna get fixed unless, you know, you have the conversation. If it's just, you know, it's more than a nuisance, I mean, it's out of people's pocket, it costs, just adds to the cost of everything.
I will bring it up.
At least let them know that, you know, this is problematic.
Right. I'll bring it up at CCM and also at council government, see if anybody else is experienced. I don't know, is there anything on your list or?
I haven't seen anything, but part of it is the interaction between the new zoning regulations, which aren't exactly aligned with the state statute and state statute itself. So the new zoning regulations require a zoning permit for every building permit. The state statute does not have that same requirement. So it's, it's a situation that we've created for ourselves in the new zoning regulations and the Planning and Zoning Commission. I have talked to them extensively about it, and they desire to keep it this way, so.
Oh, okay, so it's a state problem, is this because we wrote, rewrote ours or anything?
Right.
Well, they just asked the question, I don't know, we missed it. What is, what are some of the logic of why they want to keep it? I mean, I can appreciate the oversight, but.
You know, I had about a forty-five minute conversation with them about it, and I tried to explain the subtleties of the situation, and they essentially said, you know what, we just rewrote this ordinance. We're gonna, we're gonna stand on it for a while and see what happens.
Well, okay, let's keep it on the list, though, and just see how, things have to be a work in progress.
Yeah, but there must have been.
I don't wanna go back and do a whole zoning shade for this one issue, but I want it to be on the list of priorities when we do have to go in and clean things up.
There must have been a reason that they considered valid to do this. It's almost like double taxing.
Uh, you know, not having been part of the original conversation, I really can't explain where it came from. They, they claimed to have brought it forward from the previous regulations, but somebody at some point decided that every building permit required a zoning permit. I just don't know.
I just feel for the taxpayers' sake, they should, I mean, I'm just thinking to myself as a tax, I would just love to know why.
Yeah.
Why they're what? I mean, they, they, I respect their opinions, I respect their time they put into this, but, but what's the bottom line? Why?
What's to do inside of it?
Yeah, no, I could probably talk to Glenn Charles, see if he's got any recollection as to what generated. But you just mentioned that it may have been a carryover from the old code.
Yeah, that, well, at some point, the town enacted a zoning permit process that not, though every building permit is required to be reviewed by the planning department, there is no requirement in the state statute for zoning permit. So at some point, somebody enacted that as the process for the town. And I need to do a little more research to see when and why that happened.
Good.
All right, anyone from the public wishing to weigh in on this? Anything further from the members? No? Good. All right, I'll close the public hearing. Move on to item number three. Anne, thank you.
Thank you.
Public forum, anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? Anyone online? No one in the room. All right, item four, approved minutes. First up is December sixteenth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion? And a second, thank you. Any comments, questions, suggested changes?
I have just one. On page four, there's a comment attributed to Ms. Wallace, which doesn't, I think that was my comment. It was about money left on the, on one of the lines.
Got it. Okay, thank you. I'll take care of that. Anything else? Hearing none. Let me try your minds, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Four dot two, December eighteenth, twenty twenty four, special meeting, public hearing. Is there a motion to approve?
Take the vote.
And a second, comments, questions, suggested changes, anything? Okay, this was, this was the ordinance on prohibiting cannabis sales. Just one comment, there was some, I think some confusion in the Guilford Courier two editions ago. They indicated that we hadn't taken any action on it, so it might have left the meeting early. So, not sure what happened there, but we did, in fact, enact the ordinance, so just wanted, for the record. Anything further? Let me try your minds, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Four dot three, the December twenty-third, twenty twenty four meeting, and that was related to potential land acquisition. Is there a motion to approve?
So.
And a second, any further comments or questions? We will be addressing something similar to that at the executive session again today, so on that very same topic. Let me try your minds, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item five, finance director, me, obviously, discussed to take possible action on salary transfers and recommend to the, to recommend to the board of finance.
Good morning. So as Mitch and I and the department heads are putting together the budgets for the upcoming fiscal twenty-six year, isn't that an awful number? Anyway. We, we realized that we had not adjusted the salaries for the contracts that were finalized this fiscal year, so that when, for instance, the police department was comparing twenty-five to twenty-six, it, it did not accurately reflect where they really were today. That's why we put money in reserve for personnel. So I come before you today with a total of a hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and twelve, love those kinds of numbers, sorry, um, broken out in the list that I've given you, but to have this approved, so that as we present, it still needs to go to the board of finance later on in the month, but I'd like to get these in, so as we're presenting our budgets to you on the fourteenth and fifteenth of this month, it, you'll, you'll see these accurately reflected in the presentations.
All right, is there a motion to make the salary transfers as outlined in the memorandum provided by Mary Jane?
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, in a second.
I'll second.
Got a question.
So these are actually retroactive, we're simply approving already contractually?
Correct. Mitch maybe can explain, but we, when, when we go, when we budget, you know, like for twenty-six, we have a number of contracts even this year that will not be finalized before the budget goes through, so we put money in reserve for personnel. Anytime between the day that the budget is voted on and the beginning of the year, or whenever the contract is approved, it, it, it is as of July one, twenty twenty-four.
In the budget process, I know Mitch puts in something anticipating.
That's what this is. That's this reserve for personnel. That's what, that's what I meant when I said, you know, we set money aside in this budget.
We just said number transferred.
It's just not transferred into the appropriate lines once the contracts were.
Mitch's number or the difference between Mitch's number and reality? Is this the total number?
This is a change to the number you currently have, and so this is in addition to the number, so we're taking money. Yes, so we, when we budget, and you'll see that when we do twenty twenty-six, many of the departments will be zero because those contracts have not been ratified for the new year yet, so the increase is zero. So if it's a hundred thousand dollar budget in twenty-five, we put a hundred thousand dollars in twenty-six because we don't know what that change is gonna be. Once those contracts, so then Mitch estimates what we might need for those, and we put that, we budget that in reserve for personnel. And then each year, we come back to you to say, okay, now these contracts have been finalized. This is the amount that we're moving from reserve for personnel into those budget lines to accurately reflect where it should have been, had we had those numbers at budget time.
Okay, question remaining. Is, are these numbers the delta between Mitch's estimate in reality?
Yes.
Maybe Mitch ought to adjust his estimates going forward.
Well, you can't because we don't, we don't know, the contracts haven't been sold, so he, you know, the differential is unknown. It could be two and a half percent, it could be three percent, or it could be two percent.
And, and I understand, and that's, you know, I don't, I'm proud of that, it's just a hundred and sixty thousand.
Yeah, but.
But we had, excuse me, Charles, we had much, we had more than that in reserve personnel. So what Mary Jane is doing essentially is taking money out of one pocket that we had a lump in, in reserve personnel and taking from that and putting it into the respective buckets where it has now been finalized, especially the big ones are this police and, and the dispatchers whose contracts were under negotiation at the time of the last budget season.
I understand that, okay, and I understand it.
Yep.
It's an accounting function, I understand that part. The question that was just answered was that you're estimating that part that was put aside in the budget, this is the difference.
Oh, no, no, that's no.
I asked you what the delta was, you thought this was the.
Okay, so we're, you're asking one question and we're answering a different question, I'm afraid. So we put aside money in reserve for personnel. We had like two hundred and seventy thousand, I think, in there.
And that's what this is.
And this is one.
That's what I was trying to get at.
I'm sorry.
Okay, we were answering it based on the salary line items, so.
That, that's all I was trying to get to.
Correct.
Did the estimate?
Yes, the estimate covered what you have, more than, more than covered what you have there.
Correct. This is money currently budgeted in reserve for personnel, not in addition to that, okay. I apologize, I did not understand the question.
So at this point, is there's still, there are still funds in reserve for personnel? We don't have anything else that we expect to be adjusting this year.
Anything else that you have adjusted?
Probably not, probably not.
That means that, that account, that reserve account will, will be there to be utilized for the next budget cycle.
Yes.
There's usually always a carryover. There's always.
And we, and we do that each year, so we, in fund balance, we, we do, at the end of the year, money that we have left over in that account, we do move to that. There's currently a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in that fund balance that we could utilize for a, in a future budget, yes.
Mitch's estimate is gonna be large.
Large, because we have a lot.
Four contracts.
It's just, you know, you're trying to, in that budgeting process, is that number okay?
Correct, we are not over budget at any point, and any.
That's what I was trying to get at.
I apologize.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? All right, we have a motion on table. Let me try your minds, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right there, Mitch.
I'm gonna slide down.
All right, item six, Mitch, six dot one, is considered to possible action on the Guilford Pension Committee recommendation to engage Lincoln Financial as the sole record keeper for the four oh one A and four fifty-seven B plans. Steve Cox, representing the pension committee.
Scott Bolton is here.
Scott, welcome, Scott.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Your floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you very much. So with me today, Scott Bolton from Fiducian Advisors, who is representing the pension committee this morning. This is a process, and Mary Jane's been involved, obviously, as well as the entire pension committee. And we also have online several representatives from Lincoln Financial joining us on Zoom today who can answer some questions, if there are questions, and certainly can obviously want to listen in because it certainly affects them. Going back well over a year ago, it was determined that we as a town have some responsibility in managing the voluntary defined, defined contribution or deferred contribution opportunities that our employees have. There's been since Supreme Court cases, there's been lawsuits about the role of the employer. And we being the employer had engaged with Fiducian Advisors to help us with our pension. We've also engaged with them to help us look at our deferred and defined contribution plans, that being the four oh one A, which is, I think everyone here is aware, is the primary, if not the only, way for all of our full-time employees to engage in retirement plan right now, as well as our four fifty-seven B programs, which are voluntary, which all full-time employees are able to defer compensation in there for tax savings for retirement. What Fiducian, and specifically Scott, looked at, based on recommendation from the pension committee, was back this past summer, is to go out and test the waters and see to make sure that the fees that were being charged to our employees were appropriate and not out of bounds. And also at the same time, on a recommendation from Fiducian, was to take a look at, would we be able to reduce those fees if we were able to combine the, all the, the different programs into one, what they call record keeper, one firm managing both the four oh one A and the four fifty-seven? This was done, by the way, in conjunction also with the Board of Education. So we went out to bid, we went out for proposals in August. Scott helped with, with Mary Jane, developed an RFP. We put that out, we ended up with eight bids and proposals. We narrowed it down to three firms that we felt, we being, actually, it was a pension committee and a subcommittee of the pension committee, felt three firms were the best, both in terms of responsiveness and fees. There were Zoom interviews done with all three, and it was narrowed down to one that was recom, is being recommended today by the pension committee, and that being Lincoln Financial to take over our four oh one, which is currently with Mission Square, and our four seven B, which is currently with Corbridge, as well as Lincoln Financial, but not quite the same Lincoln Financial, because it's, and Scott can explain this better than I can. Lincoln Financial, we work with right now, is, 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 is worked with Gene Harris and Associates out of North Haven. It's not directly with Lincoln Financial. So with that, I'm gonna turn this over to Scott to explain what we saw from those bids and how the recommendation came to be that Lincoln Financial would be the best for the town of Guilford to move forward with. And I would also say that back, and this was voted on in November by the pension committee. In December, we had, on December fourth, actually, we had a meeting with the union representatives, or representatives of all the unions were invited, they didn't all show. Representatives of the unions were here in this room, and we discussed why we did what we're doing, how it would affect them. There was a lot of concern, especially from one group, that being the fire department. And I think when it was over, they walked out of here pretty much satisfied that we're making a decision that is on their best behalf. And I've heard after that meeting that some of the people that were most affected or most concerned said, you know what, this is gonna be a good thing for us. So I'll let Scott explain why and how we got to where we are. Scott, thank you.
Thanks so much, Mitch. Good morning, everybody. So as Mitch mentioned, I work at Fiducian. I help oversee our defined contribution practices, specifically our defined contribution practice over municipalities. I work with a dozen of your peers in Connecticut and outside of Connecticut as well. As Mitch mentioned, we went through the RFP process, and the reason why we recommended doing the RFP process and doing the consolidation is Mitch mentioned, one, was fee savings, and two is administered efficiencies from the town standpoint, as well as just employee understanding from their standpoint, rather than understanding, I go here for my four oh one A, or which one do I go for my four fifty-seven? It's much more simple, they can just, here's one person to go to. Overall, we did the review, the average fee across the three different plans, and it does vary across the board. The weighted average fee for just the record keeping services, so not investments, but just the statement, call center, website, what have you, was point eight seven percent, eighty-seven basis points. By doing the consolidation and with Lincoln's proposal, that would drop down to point two one percent, saving the employees, not the town, the employees who pay that fee about a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars annually. And that was actually as of three thirty-one balances, so that number has gone up fairly significantly since then. So again, administrative efficiencies, enhanced fee savings. At the next pension committee, we'll also vote on a new fund menu and mapping strategy to move them to a new, more streamlined investment menu. We'll see further fee enhancements from investment standpoints as well. But yeah, from a record keeping standpoint, this just, I think, makes a lot of sense across the board. We've worked with Lincoln and all the other providers that responded to the RFP, but we've worked with Lincoln specifically, with some of your peers in Connecticut. Mitch and team and Mary Jane did reach out to references. All of Lincoln's references were glowing. So really, they did come out as the best provider for your defined contribution plans.
That one's your question?
When you say peers, municipalities?
Specifically municipalities, some cities, some towns. But specifically government municipalities.
Instead of you, you're dealing with about a dozen in Connecticut, and you have others outside, national, I didn't.
Oh, so sorry, yeah, Fiducian Advisors, we are a national firm. We have about two hundred and thirty-ish employees. We oversee about three hundred and sixty billion aggregate assets across pension, yeah, 401Ks. We do work with a lot of for-profit and non-for-profit entities as well, a defined contribution standpoint. And then I specifically help oversee our governmental area. So I work with about a dozen collectively as a firm, from a defined contribution standpoint, overseeing the four oh one and four fifty-sevens. We have, I believe, about two dozen total Connecticut municipalities that we work with, including pensions, who I believe are closer to fifty Connecticut municipalities that we work with.
I somehow have failed to get the connection between Fiducian and Lincoln, and you probably said it, but do you mind saying it again?
Zero connection. So we are, we are a completely independent, unbiased firm. The town hired us, we have a fee that the town pays for.
You came in as an advisor.
We are an advisor, correct.
So if we go with this new Lincoln setup, you're not involved anymore?
I would be still involved to still oversee Lincoln and oversee the fund menu.
Just as a consultant?
As a consultant, yes.
And with the former plan, was it the same sort of setup? Was there like an advisor and a provider?
No, was not.
So this is a little different.
Little, little different. We were dealing directly, and I will be dealing, and so will Sharon, be dealing directly with Lincoln, but certainly Scott will kind of oversee as well, kind of like he does for the, for the pension plan as well, that he, but Fiducian does with our pension plan, reports back to the pension committee, you know, how things are going. We'll, we'll, we'll see things in the, in the universe of, of what's going on in, in the, as plan sponsors out there, as, as to whether we should be making changes, he'll make recommendations as to whether maybe we should be changing the funds for best for our employees, but overall, just, just as an oversight.
With additional regulatory legislative changes, that's what we're here to do. I mean, basically, there was, you know, really no oversight over these plans beforehand, and that's not uncommon.
That was the impetus of, of starting this whole program, because we didn't have anybody overseeing it, Sandy. So we had no one overseeing it, just ourselves, so this, yes, yes.
No, this is, I, I'm, I'm basically in favor of this. I don't want you to think I'm being adversarial. It's going to benefit the employees and the fee structure, but is it costing the town more to have two different entities now?
Well, it only costs the town on the fees that we'd be paying to Scott, which we are paying already to oversee, and I say Scott, really, to Fiducian Advisors, to help us oversee this. There will be a yearly fee, yes. We're paying that now. We're also paying a similar fee, if you will, to Fiducian, same company. We work with Chris Ketchmar, colleague of Scott's, for the pension.
Pension manager, okay.
But the reality is, this is a new layer of oversight. It was perpetrated by a series of federal court cases that found that the municipalities had a fiduciary responsibility to ensure that the plans that they were putting their employees in were not charging excessive fees, and they were giving them a variety of choices that would be available to anyone who went to any other investment firm. So pretty much, I think the reality is, you know, we put a four oh one A together, we put a four fifty-seven. Fine, we're done with it. You guys, you guys manage it yourself. And that had been, and that had proven in a couple of court cases to be not enough oversight. So, so this is, this is why Mitch had identified this in, what, eighteen months ago?
Yeah, probably.
It was probably close to eighteen months ago, since then we got this done, but.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And that was added to the charge of the pension committee, the oversight of, of these plans.
Right, yeah, that's a very good point, that the pension committee, although the title is still pension, really has become retirement committee, to oversee the retirement plans. And the four fifty-sevens, even though they're voluntary, are still, we do have some fiduciary responsibility to those.
And you've selected which vendors to allow, and that those vendors, they don't take a fiduciary responsibility to say which funds they are allowing. They gave fifty funds out of fourteen thousand. And they said, basically, here are the funds, let us know if you initially. So this is just adding that fiduciary oversight over those structures.
And, and unlike the pension scenario where the fees that Fiducian gets come out of the pension portfolio itself, there is not a similar vehicle to go get the, the fees to manage this thing from the individual 401K accounts. It's not, it's a, it's completely different structure. The uh the the fees to manage this thing from the individual four oh one K accounts, it's not, it's a, it's completely different structure, so. Yes, it is a new cost to the town to provide it, but it's one that is largely been dictated by court cases.
And you will see that as we present our budget for twenty six, there is a line item specifically for that. Wi- within um the budget, very clear to to show that that fee is there for the town.
I I think it's very wise and I also want to acknowledge, I think it was probably a great deal of work to go through this and all the research.
I'm done now, it's all missed.
One other point I wanted to make is the uh four fifty seven that I participated in. Uh is managed by Eugene Harris, which is a uh a Lincoln Financial uh vendor. Um so it's, it was the back office, uh Lincoln was the back office for most of the reports and stuff that those of us who are in that plan. They get from uh from Eugene Harris, right, associates, so it's really no change for us for some of those, right?
It it will be a slight change though, so under the Eugene Harris solution is a broker model. So you're paying additional broker fees and then you're getting onto the Lincoln platform, we'll be moving to Lincoln Direct. So Lincoln, uh Eugene Harrison even respond to the RFP.
I was surprised by that.
Um and so, you know, we moved to Lincoln Direct. Fee savings, there will be fun menu design, fun changes. Um and then now you'll have, um as you can see on the phone here, David Aries will be the directed um education or specialist advisor from Lincoln. So you'll deal with David versus trying to call Eugene Harris.
Is this an annual, is it a contract, is it an annual or two years?
So the the uh contract with Lincoln Financial has a three-year guarantee for their fee structure of point two one percent. Um but the contract is really evergreen, there's no um. The town is not subject to be stuck there, if you will, for three years. If we, after a year find that they are not doing what they're supposed to be doing. We can easily leave them, there's no cancellation clause or anything like that. Um we obviously, being an ongoing advisor, will continue to oversee that fee. And then if we see that the plans grow, for example, the market uh indicates that.
Generally, but you know, it al- it also is going to depend on the relationship that Lincoln has with not just. Myself and Sharon at the Board of Ed, with our employees, if we start getting. You know, indications that people are not satisfied, they're calling and not getting responses, that that could be a key to make a change too, not that I'm expecting that.
And there's no penalty if we do decide to make a change, Lincoln is committed to approximately.
Yeah, without increasing their fee and candidly, the fees have been coming down over the last decade, so we haven't seen any record keeper increasing their fees. You know, for the technology fees are coming down, so I would not anticipate three years from now, they're going to go from twenty one basis points to forty. Um I would anticipate if anything, we'll go to them and say, hey, the plans have grown, let's bring that twenty one down.
But you'll probably go through the same exercise every three, four years anyway.
We may.
Best practice is typically every five or so. Um if we find that there is issues, might go a little bit earlier, if we find that everything's really well and we don't want to go through an RFP process. You know, maybe push it back to seven.
Yeah, Scott, can you explain the process now after the board, presuming the board votes today to to approve this change? What would be the process timeline, how that, how's that going to work, so? Because I'm going to have to notify all of our employees, which is a very vast majority of people who are either in the four oh one or the forty seven or both. Or either, um and so we notify the union representatives, hopefully that the word is out that this is happening and not everyone has gotten the word. Um it does also affect some of our retirees who are who have retired with a defined. Uh or deferred compensation four seven plan and still with that, that's all part of the the assets that are involved here, so. Like Scott to tell us what happens after today, presuming there's a positive vote.
Great, yeah, so what will happen is that we will give notification, obviously, to Lincoln, uh who's on the phone, as well as the other vendors that. We are terminating the the contract with them, uh we'll work with the team on the phone here uh to go through a transition strategy. Typically, it takes about a hundred and twenty days uh from the start to when we can go live. It can go back further than that if we want to allow for more uh time for communications. So let's say hypothetically, we do this today, we'll be looking at end of April or sometime in in May. To be a go-live date at Lincoln and with the old plans transitioning to Lincoln. Um prior to that date, there will be communications being sent out both from the town as well as from Lincoln of here are the upcoming changes. David Aries on the phone here is the education specialist. He and potentially myself will be coming on site to do education both prior to and after the changes, saying, hey, here's what's up- upcoming. And then once it's landed at Lincoln, hey, your account's here now, let's help, you know, log in and access your accounts.
Thank you, thank you both, yeah, thank you for the explanation. Any uh further comments or questions from uh board members?
Yeah, just wondering, would it be sure to ask the amount that we're going to be seeing in the budget, do you have an idea, just so that we don't?
Approximately twenty thousand.
Okay.
Do we vote, because I am in a four fifty seven.
We are. I think we can refuse ourselves. Although, this is really.
I mean, it's a legal issue, but I mean, you know, quite frankly, you're you're voting not just for yourself, but for. Quite a few other people involved, so your 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 vote is still going to be affecting a lot of people, so.
I think we're going to refuse with uh with.
I mean, if I could, I would go against it, I know.
Mitch, I have a question, or Matt, i- i- if if somebody wanted to know every charge against. The dollar that they invest next month or six months from now, um who who gives them that answer?
Well.
I'm not sure who gives it today, it's part of the problem.
That is, that is a great question.
Lincoln wants to answer that, but.
Yeah, so going forward, Lincoln will, you know, the fee structure will be different going forward. So today at all vendors, they have what are called loaded mutual funds. So someone will invest in the fund, they'll see that their fee is, I'm gonna make up a number here, point, one point four percent is the fee for their mutual fund. That's the fee that they see, there's no deductions from their account, it's just a, your performance is net of that fee. Now, under the hood, you know, they're being charged one point four percent, point nine percent is going to the record keeper. And then point five percent is going to the investment manager. Going forward, the structure will be, they will see a much lower investment fee, some of those can go down to point zero two percent even. And then they will see each quarter a portion of that point two one percent deducted quarterly. So about point oh five percent a quarter on their statements, so that will be part of the communication structure of, hey. You're going to start seeing a fee, overall, you're paying much less, but it's like getting a um itemized check versus one bill, if you will.
Actual, an actual dollar fee here on their quarterly statement. As opposed to this percentage fee which gets whacked on the front end right now.
It'll still be a percentage of assets fee on their quarterly statement, it will not be, each person will say, pay the same percent. Not the same dollar amount, so larger balances would have a higher fee.
During one of our meetings, I actually went live onto mine and I could not in on online. Tell you what fees I was paying.
Right. No, I get it, this is a better, this is a better place to be, to have record keeper in place. And to have, it it adds transparency, as I understand it, having gone through this tiny bit. Um uh my my myself, i- in addition to the record keeper, i- i- it can tell me, guys, tell me if I'm wrong here. Um in between the actual investments, let's say I want to buy, you know, some crazy mutual fund, Q Q Q, whatever, whatever, probably a bad example. Is there also a custodian of the funds and who is that and is that likely to change?
So so Lincoln will be, you know, where all the assets and the investments are held. Uh the retirement or pension board with the assistance of us will select which investments are available. Um so we will choose which target date funds are available, what large cap growth fund, bond fund, international stock fund. So we will select which funds are available for investments and then individuals will choose from that street uh let menu, so we won't. We will not have Q Q Q in that uh line, not for example.
Okay, fair enough, but 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 there is going, so Lincoln is both the record keeper and the custodian of the funds, is that, is that accurate? Or am I getting my terminology wrong?
No, you're accurate.
Okay, and 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 periodically, periodically, every year, I imagine, right? Lincoln, along with you, Scott, in some way, will, there'll be a presentation of, look, here's the funds we traditionally have. But here's one we're dropping and here's why, and here's an alternative or a series of alternatives, people can make annual elections on these things, in fact, mid-year elections.
People can make changes, individuals can make changes at any time, so they are, they can change daily if they wanted to, not recommended, but they could change whatever they wanted to. We, uh fiduciary will be providing recommendations to the retirement board to oversee which funds, so example, hey. Large cap growth fund A is out of favor, we recommend you place it with large cap growth fund B. And then the pension committee will vote on that and then Lincoln will change the one fund for the other fund, individuals just move to the new fund.
So the pension committees make, or the, as Mitch says, the retirement board, if we get the name pushed through. Uh is going to be making this, the individual uh uh retirees or or. You know, investors, employees, they're they're not, they're not making these decisions, it's the pension board, the retirement board that's making these.
They are, they are making decisions within the array, the array of investment vehicles where they want to put their money. It is just, it is, it is just the available funds, the the targeted funds that will be available to our employees. Are determined by fiduciary and the uh and the retirement board as a result of the recommendations from fiduciary, so. They they will have, individuals will have choice within a window that is set annually.
Yeah, it's a a very streamlined, well diversified but streamlined window. Okay, I got it.
So so Lou, you know, just to, in full and full disclosure as well, I'm I'm involved in this as well, I have a four, four three seven plan right now. Mary Jane mentioned herself, um one, one other thing to keep in mind with all this is not only are people able to make those. Those decisions, whether they want to be more conservative, more aggressive, depending on the market, depending on what their age is, how close they are to retirement. Lin- Lincoln will be coming in to meet with our employees, both at our our benefits fairs. Annually, as well as come in, we've been told at least quarterly to meet with employees who want to meet with them to discuss their investments. Um and one thing we gain, the employees gain. Uh by having a single record keepers for those, and you know, more and more people are in the four oh one each month as people retire from the pension. And new people are hired in the four oh one, what was happening was you'd have. One, one person coming and talking to someone about their investments in the four oh one. And someone else coming and talking about their investments in the four fifty seven.
Yeah.
And one might not know what the other one's doing, and so trying to help someone plan for the retirement. This will give one person more global aspect to say, okay, in your four oh one, do this, in your four fifty seven, do that. And be able to help somebody overall uh better manage their retirement going forward, for those that are in both for four oh one and four fifty seven.
Okay.
All right, uh I want to thank uh the representatives from Lincoln for uh having come on this morning and put up with the earlier part of our meeting. Uh thank you very much, uh it, I'd I'd open it up, is there, is there anything any one of you uh would want to say? Uh as as we are about to embark on this relationship?
No, good morning and happy new year, everyone. Uh everything you said really explains the whole process and. Uh you are eloquent in in really bringing us through the whole process and and the overall benefits to the town of Guilford employees, so. Uh we appreciate all of that.
Hey, Chris.
Thank you.
Anything further?
No. All right, uh is there a motion to approve? And a second, uh let me try your minds, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Recusals?
Recuse.
Recusal, but with support. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for participating this morning and we look forward to a longstanding relationship.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item seven, discuss to take possible action on an ordinance to amend the code of the town of Guilford, chapter one sixty six, fees, article two, planning and zoning fees. Uh as a result of uh our public hearing earlier, uh as uh I I think we satisfied most of the questions and comments. Um is there a motion to approve the fee change? Second, second, okay, any further comments or questions? Uh hearing none, let me try your minds, Selectman Federici?
Aye, I'll be in the sign.
Those in the room, aye, that motion carries. Uh item eight, appointments and resignations, act on a resignation received from Tom Loomis from the Inland Wetlands Commission. Uh is there a motion? And a second?
Second.
Uh with appreciation and and regret, right? Um so let me try your minds, uh Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Yep, there's your hand, uh those in the room, aye, that motion carries. Uh item nine, request reuse of town property, act on a request from the country schools, place a sign and agree advertising there. November second, twenty twenty five, open house sign placement, uh would be October uh twentieth through oh November second. Fair motion?
Some move.
And second?
Second.
Uh comments or questions, hearing none, let me try your minds, uh all in favor, Selectman uh Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Uh item ten, committee reports, uh eleven correspondents. Old business? New business? All right, before we go into uh executive session, is there anyone in, you know, wishes to address the board in public forum? Uh hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session, the agenda uh contemplated. Two uh two discussions, there are an executive session, we are going to. Uh table the one uh related to the ta- uh the affordable housing tax abatement application. Uh owing to some changes that uh came in uh last minute on that application, so. Um that will take up two weeks hence, uh so is there a motion to go into executive session for? Uh discussion on a potential property acquisition?
Some.
And a second?
Second.
Uh let me try your minds, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, aye, and I'm going to invite in um uh Scott Williams, uh in addition to the folks we have in the room. Um which would be Kevin, uh Gary, John Turutus. And Anne is certainly welcome to stay, as she was uh a part of a previous discussions on this.
Peter, the two.
And, yeah, I said Peter, that's it, so Peter as well. Uh and MJ, please, uh. You're gonna have to. Tracy, can you uh make sure MJ, uh, are you ready? Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So.
A second?
Second.
Let me try your minds, Selectman Federici?
Sorry, muted, aye.
Yeah, those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Uh in executive session, there were no motions made, no actions were taken, but as a result of the discussion. Is there a motion to approve uh to authorize the first election to sign a letter of intent? Uh that had been drafted and presented to us uh with one change, and that is. Uh that the town meeting for uh the potential purchase and approval of the purchases of property be held on January twenty eighth. Uh that would be the only change to the document that occurred, so um let me uh try your minds. Oh no, I need a motion first. Motion, second, and a second, thank you. Uh further comments or questions? Um I, just one comment for the record, uh this is a fast track opportunity that we have been presented with. Uh the property in question is five oh five Woodfield Street, AKA The Mauring, uh restaurant and related. Uh related buildings on that property, which includes the lobster pound. Um so uh that that is the um, that that is the purchase, the intended uh purchase for the town. Which will be subject to Board of uh Finance approval because we are contemplating using bond proceeds from the open space bond uh authorization.
Newsmark bonds.
Uh what's that?
Newsmark.
Decible bond, uh thank you, Kevin, uh that it, that we're, and we are contemplating other sources of uh financing for this. Which are included, which include FEMA fund, FEMA grants, DEP grants and state bonding. Uh so we will um. Subject to the public hearing. And and subject to the public hearing on January twenty eighth, so uh those are, those are some of the steps we are, uh the purchase price is a ladder. Uh price based on when we execute uh a purchase and sales agreement and close, more importantly, close. Uh the initial price is three million dollars, there is a provision in the document uh that uh if it, if we do not close. Within a certain timeframe that the purchase price is three point one. Uh at no time uh will the town be obligated uh to purchase this thing until such times we go to closing. Um which will be contemplated as no later than uh the fifteenth of November, I believe it is, uh but by mutual agreement. Uh both parties uh can extend beyond that uh that timeline as well. Um a a copy of this document will be made available uh uh upon request uh for the public. Um uh we will be proffering, hopefully proffering. Um, uh, we will be proffering, hopefully proffering the, uh, our signed version of it to the property owner, uh, sometime a little later this morning, so. Uh, with that, any further comments or questions?
I would like to comment that on the twenty-eighth, it's not just a public hearing, it's the town meeting for votes. So under the charter, the town votes on a property purchase, that's the purpose.
And, and we would comment it's an in-person vote, and.
Held in the evening.
Held in the evening, seven-thirty, um, Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, Community Center.
Thank you for that clarification, good. Anything further? Hearing none, let me try your minds, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you all. Uh, good work, I know this is, uh, this, this is a timeline that we're not, uh, usually accustomed to. Uh, and I want to appreciate everyone, uh, having paid attention to it, but I also want to extend my thanks to, uh, uh, Gary McCoutney, uh, John Trudis, and Kevin McGee for, uh, the work done, also Ann Harchen, uh, who's here, and, and other members of the staff who have helped us in, uh, getting to this point. So thank you very much for your work. Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Let me try your minds, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Well done, all.
Well done, thank you.
Uh, let's go across the street.